The first study session is going to be dealing on the definition, scope, origin and methods in sociology. Now, because that line have been listed, the first one is definition and scope of sociology, the origin of sociology, the ideas or founding fathers of sociology, importance of sociology, sociology as a science and major theoretical orientations in sociology. Now, at the end of this study session, you are expected to define sociology, describe the scope of sociology, explain the origin of sociology, understand the ideas of the founding fathers of sociology, sociology and founding fathers. So, what are their ideas to be able to understand the ideas of the founding fathers of sociology? Then you know the importance of sociology as a course. We have so many courses, but sociology, of what importance is this course? To be able to know the importance of sociology and describe sociology as a science, because we say sociology is a science. Now, some people are contexting our scientific status, but if you be able to understand and describe sociology as a science, then understand the major theoretical orientations in sociology. Now, definition and scope of sociology. Sociology belongs to the family of social sciences which include, all that they see as economies, political science, psychology, anthropology, geography, social work, among others there are. Maybe so, even past complications in some cases, they are also categorized among social sciences. Sociology do not respect itself to one particular area of social life. Talking about the scope of sociology, it does not respect itself to one particular area of social life. So, it covers several areas of social life. There is hardly any significant aspect of social life that sociology does not cover. That is one particular thing that is very striking about sociological sciences. This is why in sociology, wide variety of topics such as shopping, open air music, sexuality, ethnic conflict, poverty, sports science, health, drug use, law, war, religion, migration, death, colonialism, housework, suicide, murder, how they studied. All these areas are even more are they studied under sociology, because under sociology we have various areas of specialization. And some of it, all these areas that we have just listed, they come under such categories. The scope of sociology therefore in summary encompasses all facets of social life. It encompasses, it impresses all facets of social life. Sociology is a science of society. Sociology is a scientific, in definition we say sociology is the scientific study of society, patterns of social relationships, social interaction and social and cultural element. Now, the key word here is scientific study. The key word is scientific study. Sociology is a scientific study and we are going to understand why we regard sociology as a scientific study. Now, the origin of sociology. Three historical events influenced the emergence of sociology as an academic discipline. Please, can you help me go back to the previous slide? Now, I want to briefly say something on the scientific nature of sociology. Because we study human beings and we study human relationship, then what that is scientific? We adopt the scientific procedures that have also been adopted in natural and advanced sciences to be able to get our data and information. We do observe what goes on in the society. For instance, if you, for instance, today we hear they, we know and for the media and then we see drug abuse. But yesterday I was listening to the NTNU, they said that in Kansas they had the highest drug addiction in 1980. Such is a social issue. We observe that, we have understood that there is a problem. Shouldn't be like that, no. Society need to move, society need to be, you know, put in order, in shape. Drug abuse can even make things worse. So, we enter into scientific procedure stage to be able to understand why do people of such category are involved into this kind of act? And that is making, taking step after step, step after step and be able to get to our result. That's one of the things that makes sociology scientific. Alright, let's go to the next, because we have limited time. Now, the origin of sociology. We said that there are three historical events that influenced the emergence of sociology or sociological studies. And these three historical events are the Enlightenment, the Age of Risk, the French Revolution and the Industrial Revolution. Some people misunderstand this, we think maybe when you talk about the origin of sociology, they start telling you about the ideas of the founding fathers of sociology. Yes, they have ideas, but there are so, there are event that necessitate the study of sociology as an academic discipline. Before this stage, before this event, people must have, people here, there are people that have theorized about society, what goes on in society, a lot of individual scholars, they have, they do, they theorize about human relationship about the society. But this changed the status quo of the society as at the period. Now, after this event, the study of sociology came on board. I say, we say, we need a study that will account systematically the workings and the functions of, the workings and the functions of the society, how society functions, and how the society works. So, we need a discipline that will account systematically and what goes on in the society. Sociology came on board and said, I will answer that question. That is how sociology come in. Because this is, this event really put the whole world shaking. Everything was just going like this, going like that. So, we needed a very good, we needed a very good discipline that will not, this is how the workings of the society and put the society in shape. Now, let's go to the next. The Enlightenment. We said that sociology is a product of intellectual movement of 18th century. You know, that was known as the Enlightenment or Age of Risk. That period, this period, we call it Enlightenment or the Age of Risk, when people began to, when people began to risk it. Yeah, we do not only ascribe a happiness and the workings of society supernatural beings or supernatural things that happen. You say, and I go and then because someone, then with this thing that have happened like this. No! So, at this period is an age of enlightenment, age of risking, people start to know. So, we have IQ, we can think for ourselves. Alright, so, the age of enlightenment was a reaction to a situation in Europe to improve intellectual or scientific practices. As well as harvest of some of the effort which have been made. I told you that, some people, yes, there were some effort that have been made to understand the society. I told you that there were some efforts that were made to understand the workings of the society in the past. The Jews, Socrates and the rest of them, they did in Cairo, they also did. But why one of the things, one of the things that made us, we don't really regard some of the effort of them? It was not purely scientific in nature. Some of the things, some of the things that they did were travels, because it was the age of discovery. As they were going, they were writing down. Some of them, because it was travels, they were writing down. Some of them must have injected sentiment. They will come to a particular society, because maybe, let me assume, let me assume now, you come to this society because they have lacked, hmm, just in the sentiment we can enter. So, because sentiment has entered, you just write anything that you like, you hate at these people here. So, sentiment, so it was not an objective empire. So, what they did, sentiment entered. That was the effort that were made, there were effort. But we say that this era now was a period of harvest of some of the efforts that were, that have been made in the past before this 18th century. The Enlightenment marked a radical theory from the traditional thinking or feudal era, when people do so much to continue from the ground. It began started questioning each and every aspect of life. Nothing was considered sad, lucid. Nothing was considered sad, lucid. From the church to the state, the authority of the monarch and so. Because even at that point, everything the, everything the authorities say, the monarch and the church, they were the rule, they were the people ruling, anything they say, that is what was said. So, it's only from the qualification of the priest that we now can understand what goes on. So, we can't think for ourselves, but this age has that made us to understand that we have our own IQ to think for ourselves. The most popular figures in this new framework are Monteschi, who lived between this age, 1889 to 1755, just up to 1729 to this time, among others. They managed to challenge the traditional and existing concepts of the world. These guys are their time, they now challenge the existing conception, how people view and understand the world as a Latin. Let's go to the next slide. Now, we talked about the French Revolution, which occurred also, because this major historical event particularly happened in Europe. It happened in Europe. So, the French Revolution occurred in Europe, the French Revolution which erupted in 1789, marked a turning point in the history of human struggle for freedom and equality. It put an end to the age of feudalism and martial in a new order of society. That time, it was, it was the king and the priest. And then they ruled that time, it was king and the priest, what they say in 1980. So, they were the head, they were at the helm of affect in the society. Confiscation of other countries, so that India were influenced by the idea of marriage during this period of war. Many of them were ruled by priests and kings. It eliminated the social distinction between people and feudal society power, shifted away from the church and came to the hands of the people. It's no more the church that is ruling, the church is no more the one ruling, because people now understand, yes, we can't regain institute's authority. This was the first time people were seen as citizens. French Revolution brought significant changes to the family since it was followed by the Declaration of Human Rights, new to us, stated that all humans are born free and equal. Because at that time, the era of feudalism, where you work for those who have, and the priests, and they impose task on you, they will impose task. It was, it was one of the reasons it was called a revolution. Because even the staff, the people working, you work for me and we pay you and we say, ask you to pay tax from the proceeds that you receive from the wages side that you worked. And at that point, then you increase the tax again, that's in humanity. So, that was one of the things, let's go to the next slide, loss of time. The Industrial Revolution. The Industrial Revolution began around 1768, in aluminum, in England. It brought about great changes in social, social and economic life of the people in England, then in other countries of Europe and later in other countries. Industrial Revolution, we've heard about Industrial Revolution where people stopped. That was, to me, I would say that was even the division of rural urban migration. People started leaving, people, they start leaving and they move from their rural areas to the cities, where machines, there is now invention of machines and these machines are producing in industrial scale. So, people started moving and you know, it's brought a kind of social dislocation at that period because of the massive movement from rural area, where people they are working in the lands, they leave their landlands and they're renting, they're not moving to the national city. So, you know, growth of trade and commerce and husband growth of towns brought about increasing demand for goods. A gear boost was when high techs like food were produced at domestic level. But now, there is, there is an invention of machine, it's no more at domestic level, it's now at industrial scale. This means that there existed domestic system of production with increased demand, goods were to be produced on the large scale. And Industrial Revolution, new tools and techniques were invented which could produce foods on a larger scale. So, these were the, those in this event were the event particularly that influenced the emergence of sociology. Okay? Now, we are talking about the ideas of the founding fathers of sociology. I'm not going to, because of time, I'm not going to dwell so much in their previous idea, because their ideas are very creative. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, back to this, the idea, major key ideas, the founding fathers of sociology are just living like it. The one of us come, my dog kind, Haras Spencer, Mavber, Khamas and Akofasens. Now, of us, because we can't talk anything about sociology without the mention of our father. Our grandfather is of us come. Sometimes it goes like that, they used to call sociology today on us come. So, this is our father. If I talk everything to them vintage, I don't talk to this man, I ain't call it, and now one another. So, of us come is our father in sociology, number one of us come. He was the first to regard himself as a sociologist, of us come. He defined sociology as scientific study of social dynamics and social static. He argued that sociology can be studied, can and should study society and social phenomenon following the pattern and procedures of the natural sciences, talking about scientific nature of sociology. Come to the need that theoretical science of society and systematic investigation of human behavior needed, needed to improve society. So, if you study society scientifically, you improve society. He argued that the new science of society, that is sociology now, could and should make a critical contribution towards new and improved human society, not as it were before. So, this method that is trying to introduce to study society, he foresaw, he foresaw it's true to improve what the human society. Come to define society as the study of social dynamic and social static, changes and the ones that are not it. So, social dynamic signifies the changing, progressive and developmental dimensions of society. Society is evolving, because we are in a cultural environment. Culture is not static, culture is dynamic, because a lot of diffusion, cultural diffusion always will always take place. Now, social static refers to the social order and those elements of society and social phenomenon which tend to persist and relatively permanent, if I can change. There are some aspects of social life, no matter what happens, they still stand. And they move, and we still stay where we are. So, those aspects of social, in what of us come to our father, referred as the social static. Come, another contribution is his pioneer contribution to theoretical rotation that grew to be known as evolution. Yes, we talk about evolution, you know that evolution is a study process, that things graduate from the simple to the complex. So, society, to him, move, there are levels according to his theory. Society move from the simpler stage to the complex stage that we are today. Some of us we refer to as industrial society, industrial age. Now, catastrophic approach to the society or to the study of social philosophy, that is, contribution. He still describes society, because we are talking about a world that are scopic, a world that are scopic. We say, this means that he still describes society as an aggregate and went to postulate ways in which such macautism influenced the individual. So, he took the society as an aggregate one, but we felt to realize that cultural elements are relative. Cultural elements are relative. What is obtainable in a particular society may not be the same that is obtainable in another society. Let's move to the. So, he laid down some of the fundamental principles, method, concept and theories of sociology. He defined sociology as the study of social fact, as his next definition of sociology. According to him, that's what I'm talking about of us come. Social fact are distinct from biological and psychological fact, they are different. By social fact, he meant the patterns of behavior that characterize a social group in a given society. Like Nigeria today, we are multi-ethnic environment society. We have more than 760 tribes. So, we have patterns of behavior that characterize each of these ethnic groups. Igbo people, even within Igbo here, in Igbo land, sorry to use the word Igbo, it is Igbo. So, in this Igbo land, it will check very, very well. You find out that our patterns of behavior differ a little, but we share to a large extent common similarities and differences, no understand. So, what, that patterns of behavior that is obtural, that is indigenous, common to us, that characterize a group in a given society, that's what this, oh, sorry, we have moved from my dog kind. I was thinking this, this is a my dog kind. I don't know when, or that changed my listening to the lesson, this is the animal moving. Alright, so this is a my dog kind, a my dog kind theory. So, so the patterns of behavior that characterize, so it's like that is at the social fact, let's move. Let's move to Haras Spencer. Haras Spencer was a prominent social philosopher of 18th century. He was famous for the organic analogy of human society. Human society and organic system, having its own structure and function in ways analogies to the biological system. He was next to expand into other situations. Now, let me summarize this. Haras Spencer took, he was famous for the organic analogy of the human society. He compared human society to a living organism. Living organism, they have paths, they have hair, they have, so what was talking, living organism have paths and each of these paths, they are functioning. What is the essence of their functioning? The essence of their functioning is to make sure that the whole is in order. So, he took the society, he was famous for his organic analogy of human society. Let's move to the next slide. We talked about Maswaba, Maswaba lived between 1864 to 1920. For Maswaba, individual is the basic unit of society. We, the individual, is the basic unit of society. Whether opinion, opinions that it is necessary to analyze human motivations, actions and relationships, scientifically, that was it. So, it definitely understanding of the method is more effective. Now, in summary, he is postulating more of qualitative method of scientific or sociological studies. That is what he is postulating. Qualitative method of scientific study is not quantitative method and quantitative, because we have in our investigations, we do qualitative and quantitative investigation or research. So, he himself is talking more about qualitative, which comes more about interpretation and the rest of them qualitative. Let's go to the next. Khamas was a society thinker, a prolific writer, he, Khamas is the next person he did between 1818 to 1883. A society thinker, a prolific writer and a creative author. He had a sensitive briefing on social class and social group. The issue of social class and social, his central romance thought, his world, history of all he can do, existing societies is the history of class struggle. So, he talks so much about class formation, struggle, exploitation, allegation and social change. He told him, the history of all existing societies is the history of class struggle. Let's move to the next. But persons view sociology, view sociology as analysis of social relationship and cultural. He tried to keep sociology as close to natural and you're feeling that the role of reason is supreme in sociological theory. Talking about, thinking, thinking, thinking. Social science, which he calls actual science too, he calls it actual science is that, which deals with the realms of interaction and problems. The bottom books, these are his books, he talks so much about reason, reasoning, reasoning. Let's move to the next. The importance of sociology. One of the important is that it's a scientific study of society and it's only possible through sociological analysis. The analysis, the scientific study of sociology is only possible through sociological analysis. If there is, in fact, what is even going in Nigeria today? We need sociological study to be able to understand how to handle the problem. I'm telling you the truth. We need sociological studies, we need to really go into a sociological research to be able to understand the issue of patriarchy today in Nigeria. We really have to understand the issue of kidnapping and then a whole lot of them. So, that's why we are saying that the scientific study of society is only possible through sociological analysis. So, study of sociology also help us, helps us in understanding and analyzing various social problems. Social insight in terms of to understand various social problems. A branch of sociological criminality helps us in a proper understanding of crime and criminality in society, because there we understand the crime, we understand the issue of juvenile, the difference that is even common to the why that is even common to the young people do it. Young people who are not of age getting themselves so much into some elements of, you know, crime. Study of sociology also help us in the comparative understanding of whose culture, yes, if they would understand the culture, how people live in Nigeria, the people who live in, maybe in Kemeru and your other, we make a comparative analysis and be able to understand that. Sociology as a system offer a take the terror of things and issues concerning social, anything like private studies, social description, inclusion, gender studies, that's all of our studies and the rest of them. Please, let's go to the next, loss of time. Sociology as a science, like I said, so science could be defined simply as a systematic investigation of natural and social phenomenon through observation, theoretical explanation and experimentation of science. Sociological study makes use of empirical research to unravel social issue and this empirical research follows the procedure of scientific research which involves systematic and control observation of analysis, yes. In fact, that is even, this summarizes sociology as a science. We make this of empirical research, what is empirical? Those things that we have to, the experiences that we get through the five senses of man, that is the empirical. We observe, we see, we put down, we make reference. So, these are the, these are the empirical research, it follows, it has a procedure. Research is not a hazard, social research is not a hazard. I've been involved in so many social research, I've been informed so many by the special grace of God in my little life. For the first time, I was about in social research, it was a tight mortality and a primary health service at a, in Oromba not, in Anagra State we were, and what we did in Goodie here sometime on a breast cancer. So, we be level to add in, so it involves, it, there is a procedure. So, investigation of social phenomenon, sociology uses scientific tool such as software, a higher research participant documentation, which involves systematic collection of data and using specified instrument of data collection, such as in the space planias and focus group discussion, that is FGBs, the data that so collected is then statistically analyzed and from, about the population. When you use, if you are going into quantitative research, if you are going to do quantitative research, you can make use of focus group discussion and index inter with the ideas and questioner sometimes. But if you are going into quantitative, you make use of software that make use of questioning and you use, that is called, these days we use, we use SPSS, which I am by grace of God, I can do those things very well. So, we use this though, can use case player, use multiple directional analysis to make predictions, there would be the rest of them. So, and population drawn apart from you, their set. So, let's go to the next. Major theoretical orientations in sociology. Now, we are going to look at major theoretical orientations in sociology. Number one, Haralambus and Hobon define theory as a set of ideas which provides explanation for something, that's what theory is. So, we are going to look at theoretical theory of revolution, functionalism, social interaction, very nice, coming to you. The theory of social evolution, they are studying now, subject section one. The theory of social evolution is very similar to the disease of Haras Spencer, one of the universality and centrality of revolution in the process of adjusting environmental conditions. We can make reference to sociological, someone who, because one of them, of course, these are my lectures. They are my lectures. This is going to happen to do my, my external exam and this is going to do my anthropology, my first day and this is going to do my, my lectures, he just retired a few centuries from soon. He just retired a few centuries ago. Okay, although evolution is generally associated with Charles Darwin, who formulated that idea that it not varies in form from simple to more complex. The basic principle of theoretical evolution is that society changed from one form to a new one in a gradually changing continuous way. So society, there are lots of social theories that talk about the evolution of the society, how society, even Camus says something about it, eh, how the society even evolved, you know. There, for instance, we said, eh, of us Kant was of the view that society had a whole two states, the theological state, the metaphysical state, and the state where we are today, the society state. Ime Duncan says society evolved from characterized by mechanical society, it to the one that is characterized by organic society, where everybody agree, one thing, you know, and everybody move like that, but organic society, no more like that. You know, because that was what led to the issue of society, the theory of society, of Ime Duncan. Let's move to the next slide. Functionalism as a theoretical orientation could be found implied in the postulations of Ime Duncan, Harald Spencer, and of us Kant. The chief proponents of functionalism are Rabin Graham, Ronald Moniz, eh, M- Maldonovski. Functionalism has two basic assumptions. One, the idea that social life can be likened to biological life, organist, organist, and knowledge to the notion of social structure. Functionalism focuses mainly on the ability of a society to maintain a living room. Yes, that is the romance of functionalism in sociology. We have functionalism in psychology, but we are talking about functionalism in society. Maintain the living room through functional precise of each component part. Now, organism analogy, I'm a human being, I have hand, I have, I have hands, I have legs, I have head. Now, each of these parts of my body, they are all working. They are all functioning to make sure that this whole body is in order, that's functionalism, let's go to the. So it's likening to the society, society has various parts, society has various parts, each of them are working to make sure that society. So those, those parts, we may refer to as our institutions or our social institutions. So, one of them, yes, coffee theory, thank you. The major opponent of coffee theory is Camus, who saw the history of civilization as that of class struggle on basis of ownership and control of material means of production. The coffee story seems despite as being in a state of conflict resulting from class antagonism. According to, eh, to M'Asbeywa, the modern capitalist society, the one we are today, is a match, a match in a class struggle between the owners of material means of production, whom he call the bourgeoisie, and the workers refer to as the proletariats. Maxine coffee perspective has been criticized on the grounds that the idea of crisis-free social society is utopian. He sees conflict as being a state of conflict resulting from class antagonism. The people who get and the people who don't get, who do not get, the one way get and the way no get, that's the class antagonism. Let's move to the next slide.